Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 23rd, 2019 meeting of Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your presence and taking interest in planning and zoning. We'll begin in prayer. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the blessings of it, the health you've given us and allowed us to live another day. We thank you for this community we live in, this country we live in, the blessings you bestowed upon us, the freedoms we enjoy, the safety and protection you've been granted to us. We pray for our servicemen and women. You continue to bless them, protect them, let the conflicts be resolved and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Pray for our federal government this day that those issues might be resolved, the differences might be resolved, that things might be worked out, that the government may be reopened, and that we could come together as a people, as a country. Continue to watch over and care for us, God guard, direct us in all things. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I am C., approval minutes, December 5th, 2018.
I will make a motion to approve.
Terry Moseley, approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve minutes. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Financial report for November and December. Steve, you have that, sir.
Yeah, no specific comments, or again, the chairman just mentioned it's two months. To catch us up, get us on a regular cycle now, they're in your packet. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Both of them are together. I'm not sure if one motion will be good, or if we need a motion on each, but it's both finance reports for November and December.
Can you just give a statement, Stephen, of how we are financially?
Yeah, everything's looking pretty good. In fact, it's better even that you see right there. The bank balance that you see on the December report on the balance sheet shows us at $74,000. But since that time, I think we just put about $9,000 in the bank in the month of January, had some pretty heavy activity, so we're right on target according to the budget and the percentages that you saw on the finance report. Again, mid-year, you see 50% is the target, and you can see we're trending right there, revenue, and we're below on most of our expenses. And by the way, Budget Committee's gonna give a report later. The Budget Committee has met last week. We're working on next year's budget, so we have everything pretty much in line.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sue Moseley, approve.
November?
November 2018 budget report. Vince seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve 2018 November report. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
And then on the December?
Yes. Motion for December.
So moved.
Jeff Moseley, approve December budget report 2018. Vince seconds. Question, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item E, construction sureties.
Let me mention that real quick. We do need to take action on an item. There is a letter of credit in the amount of $32,000 at the Boyle County Industrial Foundation posted on behalf of IJW for a 12-inch water line to serve the property. That letter of credit will expire on February 5th, 2019. The staff's recommendation is that the planning commission renew that letter of credit. The city says they want them to repost that for year two in the same amount. There's gonna be more infrastructure built with a revision. What's happening on the site, but that portion of the water line is still needed according to the city, and we need to renew that letter of credit at this meeting, then I need to get the industrial foundation to get us a new one by the later than the 5th of February.
I'll make a motion, then we renew the letter of credit in the amount of $32,000 for IJW whiskey.
Terry Moseley, we approve as reported. Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion for the letter of credit. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Under L subdivision approvals, item one has been postponed, Whiskey Services LLC. Item two, Doug and Stephanie Coulter apply for approval, subdivision tract of land at 3024 Riverside Drive, Danville.
I'm gonna start off on this. Mr. Carroll's in the audience. Stephen Carroll's back here. These are two plats that are back-to-back, and I had some of the commissioners call me, so I'll just point this out on the screen. And Gary's got the big versions of the preliminary plat. Technical review has looked at both of these and give them approval, but you're gonna look at two plats back-to-back that are off the same farm. So the first one is basically the southern part of the farm. And what we're doing on that plat, again, here's the farm up on the screen and the whole outline of the farm. This is Winterhawk, Riverside, and Goggin. And what we're doing on the plat is we're cutting off the bottom of this piece with this building and adding it on to a family member's property right here. So plat number one would be, again, taking this little sliver, adding it to this piece. Plat two is cutting off two parcels in this area that you have in front of you. Kind of, the back would be kind of lined up here, and it'd be two-plus acre tracks, one track with frontage to Winterhawk, one track with frontage to Goggin. The rest of the farm stays intact and functions off this frontage to the rear road. So again, you've got two plats. Mr. Carroll's in the audience. The first one, again, consolidates and makes a track for a family member of 1.34 acres. Plat two that you hear in just a second, it creates a 2.6 and a 2.6 for other family members on the northern side. Again, the state's already given access, permission for one driveway for a 2.6 in this location. Second parcel, as we go up the hill, problem with access, but there's an 80-foot frontage on Winterhawk, and this property will have to use its frontage access off this unless some joint access is created between the two. But at this point, that's its legal frontage for access, and it still has frontage along Goggin as far as the development goes. Again, technical review, looked at both plats, met all requirements. Mr. Carroll's in the audience, and again, these are two separate applications, but they're related to that one farm that you see that's 26, almost 27 acres.
Mr. Carroll, any comments you'd like to make on this? Yes, I'll go to Mike, please.
Yes, sir. Hello, my name's Steve Carroll, licensed land surveyor here in Danville. As Mr. Hunter articulated, the first plant, Doug and Stephanie Coulter, is just a simple consolidation plant. No new building lot created. The second plant, two building lots are created, one will have access off of Goggin and one will have access off of Winterhawk.
Any questions from commission? Everything technically correct, Steve? Is that correct? Thank you. Need a motion?
So moved.
Jim Moseley, approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I live on Winterhawk Road. I'm concerned about the property, that there are two properties that front on Goggin Lane. And the one, I'll call it the upper one, which is the northern one, will have a driveway access using this 80-foot frontage to Winterhawk Road. I'm concerned that the farm that is to the right, or what is that, east, of the two plots that were dealt with last month, they will not, if there is any kind of development on that, there will be no access to that property, except if they use the driveway of the house that exits on Winterhawk. Approximately 15 years ago, or thereabouts, Mr. Coulter wanted to develop that entire property, and he was refused because the plat that he presented, he wanted the driveway, this is before those two properties were set up, he wanted to have access to Goggin Lane, and the State Department refused him because there was not a clear view that they require because there's a rise in the hill on Goggin Lane right there. Winterhawk, because of being grandfathered in because there was a farmhouse at the end, faces that same problem, that there is a very short site distance. When you pull out from Winterhawk onto Goggin Lane, if you make the mistake of looking left first and then right, you could very well have an accident. You must look right to make sure, look right first to make sure you have plenty of clearance there, and then look left as you're pulling out because cars come flying over that hill, and it can be very dangerous. So I am a little concerned that that personal, I should've thought of this when the two issues came, the issue of the two lots on Goggin came up, that that driveway could be changed over to an access road for development, and you then have, however many properties are developed on the farm, could very well end up going out onto Goggin Lane via Winterhawk, which compounds the potential for bad accidents there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter, you have a comment? Introduce yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Ernie Coulter, and Neil has done again what he did 15 years ago. He said we had plans to develop the whole farm. Nancy Estes was our surveyor, and she stood right here in this courtroom and said there is no plans to develop the whole farm. There was only a plan to develop one area, and if you'll notice, on Goggin Lane, there is a driveway from Dr. Smith and Dr. Smith's place where on track two, my driveway matches their driveway. The State Department has already said that's perfectly okay. Now, we never asked for a easement to that 15 years ago. Neil said they denied my claim, my request. They never did, okay? There's a lot of things that he has done, including getting petitions from all the people on Winterhawk, saying that we should not be able to do that, and in the end, I had three neighbors come and apologize for signing the release, the petition rather, based on what Neil had told them that was gonna subdivide the whole farm. It was never the intent to do that. I'm a cattle farmer, and you gotta have land to cattle farm. What we're doing is, my wife and I have been married 60 years, and we've struggled a long, hard time to get what we got. Our son wants to build a house there. We're gonna give him the land to do that and share him with my daughter. We're gonna give her the next lot to it. As people know, I must maintain a farm of greater than 11 acres. If I'm gonna have a farm tax rated, I gotta have it born at 11 acres. There's a lot of options I could've done 25 years ago. I made those options. If you'll notice in the Pico Circle down there in River U, I have a 50-foot road. Also, I had 80-foot on Winterhawk. And the reason I have that one is, the people who lived in that house, Renee Wooton, he was dying of fear for his name, and he wanted to build a porch, so he and his autistic son could sit on it and watch the traffic. They didn't have enough land. She asked my wife if we would trade. We did. We traded a 25-foot section down through there, you see where it curves, for that 80-foot section. We were required to take down all the fences and re-fence the whole thing. Cost me approximately $2,000 to do it, but I didn't mind. It was good helping people. Basically, what we're doing is, we're helping our children get a place to build a house. It's that simple. We're gonna give it to them, and I don't know why he keeps fighting us because he keeps selling things that's not true. Like, you know, I'm just disturbed. I'm slightly angered about it, but as I was raised, I'm always in control of my anger. I don't know, everything we've done appears to be perfectly okay. The road department's come, the water companies have come, we, health departments approved everything that I'm aware of. We don't know why Neil keeps ejecting, except for one thing. 15 years ago, he told me he had to have a cause to fight against. So I guess my family was just selected as the cause he was gonna fight against. So all I'm doing is just ask you to say, "Go ahead, let your children build their houses." It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments with regard to discussion before we vote on this issue? Yes, Vince?
Just ask something. You know, I've been out to that area there, and there is a, that curve is pretty, the one that comes from town, goes around that way. Is there any type of electronic means, like they do in many, many places, to solve the problem? I mean, maybe 15 years ago, they didn't have devices like that, but they do now, to slow the traffic down it, 'cause like, you could even have a light there that turns when somebody comes up Winterhawk, that would only be triggered when there was a person coming up the hill. Yeah, I mean, I don't know the ramifications of that, or how you do that, but that would seem to, you know, I don't see anything wrong with the plats, but I think there is a traffic problem, and I think Neil is right about that, but I don't think there's anything wrong with the plats as this thing. I think it's more of a, 'cause that was the main issue, was the traffic coming off there. So if that would solve it, I mean, then I think that it would be okay with this.
Well, I don't think the state's gonna put in an electronic device on, oh God.
Well, I'm just saying that there are ways to do it, you know.
Sir, if I may, I'll bring you up to date on a road project with District 7. The main site curtailment from Winterhawk Avenue, over on that road, is Greg Ramy's Hill. Greg has the house next to it on the corner. By removing four foot of that wall of the bank, we can increase the site distance by 106 feet, okay? That has been requested by, through the state, to evaluate doing that. It's a simple solution, a simple thing to do. So District 7 hasn't answered, but Ramy's as worried about it as we are because his driveway comes out on Winterhawk, and he has to come out. So there's a lot of things going on in regards to traffic, okay? We are struggling desperately to get Goggin Lane redone. It's one of the worst roads in the state, and they know it, but we do have to wait for their answer, will they do it for us? You know, will? Greg's available. He said he's fine, got no problem with it. So it's what we're trying to do as a neighborhood to correct the problem, okay?
Steve? Any other discussion? Hearing none? Need a motion?
I thought we had a motion.
Do we have one? That's right. We do have a motion. Vince second. I'm sorry, I'm behind on those. Any other discussion, then? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item three, Ernie and Norma Coulter apply for approval, subdivision of tracts of land, say 5.242 acres at zero Goggin Lane.
Yeah, I think I've discussed that. That's the northern part, and the plat you got in your packet shows those 2.6-plus acre tracks in good detail, how they align with the Goggin Road frontage and Winterhawk frontage.
That's what Mr. Coulter was just addressing.
He was addressing both.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Yeah, we still have to bring it up for.
Yes, we need to vote it on.
Jeff Moseley, approve. Jim seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item G, public hearings. Item one has been postponed. Item two, Old Shaker Town LLC, future file for a future land use map amendment for low density residential located at 707 Old Shaker Town Road.
Thank you. I'll just start off with, you've got two staff reports in your packet, one for the future land use map amendment and one for the zone change request. These two applications are somewhat connected. Our procedure here is to look at the flume amendment. The applicant has filed a future land use map amendment as a precursor to the zone change. You guys need to consider that. But part of the information in the flume request is to determine its compliance with our comprehensive plan and compatibility with the neighborhood. So unfortunately, this will drag into the zone change conditions, or some of the elements of the zone change request, but procedurally, how this works is we look at the flume, we voted up or down as a commission. If the flume is approved, we can move on to the zone change request. If the flume is denied, you guys are final action on that. The applicant has a couple options, one to withdraw the zone change, or to move ahead under another parameter, or come back at a later date. So again, we're gonna start with the flume amendment first, and that's in your packet, and I'll just quickly go through that staff report. Got some different pictures up here on the property, on Old Shaker Town Road. This is looking straight in the driveway of the property. The Housing Authority project is to your left. Some duplexes you see are on the right. This is looking more from the duplexes across the yard. Again, you get a shot of kind of the Housing Authority project, and this is the future land use map request that's being looked at. One thing to point out, again, we had application filed on January 2nd, timely. The applicant's Old Shaker Town LLC, and the applicant's here with his attorney. This is 707 Old Shaker Town. You're looking at 4.190 acres, so again, it's this piece of property right here. Interesting side note, we'll talk about, may come up later, the applicant's also own this triangle, so some issues may come up at a later date about some traffic issues. The neighbors have called about traffic. There may be some other options that could come into play, but it's interesting to note that this piece of property is owned by the same applicant, so it gives some opportunities for some different discussions. But the flume amendment basically is this. The current flume designation is low density, and as you guys know, that pretty much means single-family detached homes, traditional homes, whether they be in a subdivision setting or on single lots, no more than five units to the acre. What's next to it is multifamily. This is, this red is multifamily. These are mostly duplexes, if not all duplexes. Next door, again, a Housing Authority project and a private project. Low density consumes the map all around, even though these are big farms to the northeast and to kind of the rear, rear of this property. They're agricultural use, but the low density is, the low density category, as you all know, is all over our community. So what the applicant is requesting is to take this from low density to moderate density, which is one of the new flume categories, which is, basically can be single-family, duplexes, or multifamily, or combinations, but not to exceed 16 units to the acre. And again, these categories have kind of been legislated out with the new Chapter 9 revision, but they're still on the map because we didn't correct the map. They're multifamily, but if we were to convert those, those would convert to the moderate density category as far as the way they're, the number of units on the acreage, that would meet our moderate density thresholds of that five to 16 units to the acre. So again, the applicant's asking for this property to be from low density to moderate density. Page two of your staff report, we look at our comprehensive plan compliance, look for guidance there on how we look at flume amendments. Again, comprehensive plan and Chapter 1, as you guys knows, has goals and objectives. Page three of your staff report, Chapter 9, we get to kind of the nuts and bolts of how we make flume amendments. And right there, towards the bottom of page three, it says applicants for zone changes must demonstrate that the proposed use development is consistent with the land use designation on the flume. So again, the flume category is important. We're trying to follow the future land use map when we do zone changes. This applicant has chose to do both of these at the same hearing, which is fine, but the flume amendment would be the first step to move on to the zone change. You move to page three or four of your staff report, and the procedures for amending the flume are spelled out in detail, and there's different criteria that the applicant can choose. At the bottom of page four, the applicant has chosen what we call the compatibility argument, or the compatibility assessment, and the burden is on the applicant to prove to you that this property should be moderate density and that the development that's being proposed is compatible with the neighborhood. So again, that's where we kind of have to blend the two cases to some degree. How do we determine compatibility? They're gonna have to get up and tell you what they're planning to do, to what scale, size, bulk, and you all will have to determine, is the proposed development compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? And again, on page six, the applicant is, again, wanting to amend the low density, moderate density. There's some verbiage about the narrative that they submitted with their application that's on page six. You guys see the map, and you also see that the staff had no major items of concern on this request. There's a zoomed-out picture of the flume. Again, I keep saying flume. I'm big on these acronyms. I think you guys know, but for the folks in the audience, or if people listen on YouTube or whatever, future land use map amendment, future land use map acronym for that is flume. And there's the zoomed-out version of that in the north part of our community. Again, you see some red, which is multifamily. You see some of this orange color, which is moderate density. You see a lot of yellow on our map, which is low density. See some green, which is public, some commercial, some industrial. Again, you kind of see everything, but in the general area here of Old Shaker Town, if you guys look at this, you see low density and multifamily with the property kind of sandwiched right in between it there. So I'll just leave it at that, and then I think this would get to the zone change later on, but it is relevant to point that out, that currently, the zoning next door is NCC, which is an optional multifamily district, can be single, duplex, or multi. Property next door is GRB, which allows single or duplex, and the current property is split zoned GRA and agriculture. Again, four acres with a single structure on it in this configuration. Zone change would be next, but right now, we're back to the flume request in the general neighborhood. Again, that's a zoomed-in shot of Old Shaker Town and Shaker Town and the property. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the flume request. The applicant is here with their counsel, and I believe there are several neighbors here, possibly in support, but my guess is mostly in opposition. We've had a few phone calls when the signs went up and the letters went out, and some good discussion with some neighbors, so I think it's kind of the whole gamut of different comments and concerns.
Can you go back to this picture on there and show me where Shaker Point Apartments are in relation?
Yeah. So I guess I'm not familiar with the name.
It's on host clock. It's like on a, toward town?
It's down this way, right?
And it's, yeah.
I can't see that far.
Is it that gold, maybe?
Let me look at the zoning map. I'm not familiar with the actual name of the apartments still, and I guess Mr. Nesbitt, their attorney, could probably better answer that question in relationship to the property.
It's like the second, the next street past Mark Avenue?
I thought they-
Is where it turns?
Is this where we're at?
Is that it?
That would be in that multifamily.
Right in here.
Be in that city.
Yeah, this is the moderate density, and if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know the apartments by name, but I'm assuming you're discussing back in here.
Steve, did you say that if we were to update the flume to reflect our current designations, that the two red areas there on either side of this property would be called moderate density residential?
All the red areas that you see on the map would be moderate density residential.
Which is what the developer is requesting this be changed to?
For his property, but currently, his property is designated as low density.
Right.
And again, to give you a little history on that, keep it short, but I think the advisory committee we've been talking about, you got the zoning ordinance later today, we've been talking about the flume. I think what we've all realized over time is our future land use map is somewhat of an existing land use map, so a lot of the land uses you see on this map aren't really future in nature, they reflect what's existing, and so they're designated in kind of a fashion as you can kind of see all these little districts just kind of scattered around like this one right here. The fact that there'd be multifamily amongst all low density, my guess is that's a duplex. So it was labeled multifamily. We're future land use, where we want to go eventually. If we were to re-architect the whole map, we would put broad strokes on this, general strokes and splits, but I think what we historically have inherited is an existing land use map with future designation, so all these reds that you see all over town, and again, you see little spots of them, and this is a perfect example. You have what may be a traditional, single-family neighborhood, single-family structures, but now there's two duplexes, so they're reflected by multifamily. If you were to reclassify this block, I would think you'd make it all yellow, because it's mostly a single-family neighborhood. But in this general area, it's exactly what we have. We have duplexes on the ground, duplexes on the ground, single-family structures, single-family structures, single-family structures, and the multifamily's reflecting those duplexes. So what is the general pattern here? That's why you guys get paid the big bucks and get to cast the vote. The applicant's asking for moderate density to move forward with the project, and the actual reality is the densities on either side fall within that category. Yes, sir.
So the green area that we're talking about, do the five or six structures that are in the already existing smaller red part?
On this side?
Do they count in the 16 structures that you're gonna put on there?
No.
Or are they 16 just on the green part?
And again, it's a yellow, Vince, and it's a bad yellow because the arrow's underneath it.
Oh, okay.
But the property here is where the development would occur.
Right, and it'd be 16 structures?
And it'd be 16 structures maximum?
No, no, 16, the, the, the category is no more than 16 units to the acre. It's 4.1 acres. The applicant is proposing 65 townhomes.
Okay.
Which put it, which make that come out to 16 units because it's per acre based. So the property next door only has a handful of duplexes on it, but it's less than an acre. So when you figure out six units on half an acre, that's 12 units to the acre.
So it's about 100, including the ones that there's about 30 some on the other one. I, I can't really count them on that little thing, but.
Yeah, somewhere in that.
That means there's like 100 houses and the area itself that we were already talking about is side road, uh, that because the traffic is so bad already.
Yeah.
So I mean, how does, does that fit together? I just want to, I just.
Well, I think the future land use map, again, the basis of your all's discussion is compatibility. So how you get there under our Conference of Plan is proof you're going to either hear from the applicant and/or the neighbors and that you all will have to make a decision. Does this meet the directives in our Conference of Plan? Is the proposed development compatible with the surrounding development? And again, it, it's a hard argument when one neighbor's got three duplexes on half acre and a gentleman's proposing 65 townhomes on four acre, but the densities are either compatible or they're not. You can make an argument 16 verse 12 is different or 16 verse eight, but the moderate density is a range and then there's a housing style and form that comes with that range. Um, the zone change is next if the Flume is successful and that's where you lock down conditions. But unfortunately, again, I think the applicant's going to have to get up here and describe his product to you so you guys can determine compatibility and that could go on to a lot of issues.
Okay.
So, uh, again, I'm glad, that's all I have. And the applicant is here with his attorney. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Kevin Nesbit. I'm an attorney here in Danville. I know many of you, but, um, just for the record, that's who I am. I, uh, I think the staff report pretty well lays things out if you, and just looking at the map, you look at it and, uh, the compatible use and the appropriate use for this is medium density, moderate density residential, um, to the north and to the south. It's, uh, Nichols Terrace and then Mr. Rick Cole's, uh, properties. It, um, my, uh, if you look at the staff report, he's laid it out pretty well. If you look at the general land development, um, it fits within that category. He didn't include housing, the housing goal, which I believe it qualifies there that, um, the goal is to provide an adequate supply of decent, safe and sanitary housing for citizens of all income levels. Um, my clients, uh, believe that there's a need for this, uh, type of development and, uh, it, we're getting, I'll kind of try and head something off. You're going to hear, I believe, some objections or some concerns about, um, traffic and sewer, maybe things like that. Those are all things that would be addressed at the site plan stage. Um, what we're talking about at this stage is to, uh, consider a land use map amendment. And if you look at that clearly, um, staff's told you that this would be projected as moderate, uh, density residential. Now, they've said up to 65. They, uh, before you spend the money and you develop the site plan, see what you need to do on traffic, um, it may be less than that, but this would be the maximum. We put that in because that, that's what, uh, the designation is. I don't really know what else to tell you. I, I believe the, um, staff did a good job, um, preparing this report. And I think if you look at any of those overhead views, you'll see that this is the appropriate and compatible use for the area. And I, I believe, um, that, um, the future land use map is appropriate. I'll be glad to answer any questions. We have, uh, Dale Shepperson here with us, uh, for AGE Engineering, um, that's done some of the work. We have James Boucher here. He's one of the, uh, members of the LLC and we'll all be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Steve, animal is directed at you or, or to, but, oh, under moderate density residential, what's the number of, maximum number of stories? Is that defined or not?
It's not defined that detailed when we get to the Flume.
Right.
The zone change and the zoning ordinance would dictate. Uh, their proposal under the zone change is NCC. So we have height restrictions there in the NCC district. And of course, you guys can set any conditions. That's your authority, the applicant's authority to put those forward. But I think they're proposing two-story townhomes, um, 1,000 square foot, somewhere in that range, no more than 65. Those conditions are outlined in your zone change staff report. Um, but we start to move towards the NCC district and its parameters. But the Flume is a little broader to allow, uh, to assess compatibility. In this case, if you all think two-story is not compatible, that's a relevant issue. If that's, you feel a deciding factor in this. But I think in general, the Flume is giving you a density range and a housing type.
Again, jumping forward, we have agreed as a condition, uh, as at the zone change level, that it would be a maximum two-story elevation.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this? Okay. Give everybody an opportunity to try not to discriminate. Anyone like to speak in favor? Hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Go to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Some of what you're going to hear from me has been addressed by Mr. Nesbit, but I still need to, um, reiterate my, um, concerns. My name is Jacqueline Stigall. I currently live at 107 Saddle Ridge Circle here in Danville, but I own the property at 901 Shakertown Road, which is adjacent to 707 Old Shakertown Road. I have several concerns about the changes requested for the future land use map and the zoning of the property at 707. And the narrative that was submitted by the owners, they state that the property on either side is multifamily use, but not totally. Yes, one side is multifamily housing owned by the Housing Authority of Danville. And on the other side, a very small piece of land containing three duplexes that border the property, but the remaining adjacent property is all agriculture. So my first concern is that the multifamily housing will affect the value of my property at 901. The development plan that was submitted does not tell us if they are building high, medium, or low income residence, for low income residence. The developers are asking for the future land use map to be changed from low density residential to moderate density. This would allow for up to 16 dwellings per acre, but in the zoning change, they request for an NCC zone, Neighborhood Conservation Classification, which is the same as the Danville Housing Authority owns. That might mean the same type of housing that could be built on the property, which adds to my concern about the value of my farm. My second concern is the increased traffic at the intersection of Shakertown Road, also known as North 3rd Street and Old Shakertown Road. This can be hea- a heavily traveled road. Northbound cars coming down the hill on 3rd Street and wanting to turn left onto Old Shakertown could create a very hazardous situation. With the triangular shape of this intersection, one is making a U-turn to get onto Old Shakertown Road. With this development, there will be at least 65 or more cars using that intersection almost daily. My third concern is water runoff, drainage and trash, trash washing onto our property. We have a considerable amount of trash and debris in the creek that flows in front of our property. With so many family units built on 4.1 acres, there will be mainly asphalt to cause water runoff and many more people to create more trash. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rick Cole. This is my son Chad Cole. Chad's a local attorney as well. Um, I own a small tract of land there.
Give your address, please.
I'm, I'm sorry. Um, I own 711 Old Shakertown Road.
Where you reside?
No, sir. I, I live in Bluegrass Estates.
That's what we need your address, please.
Um, it's 1085 River Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
Um, and first of all, I apologize. I'm not someone who comes and speaks out in public.
That's okay.
Um, so I'm a little nervous, but here's my concern. Um, if, if you look at the map, um, I don't know how this pointer works. Push here. Oops. Sorry about that. All right, so where's it at? Okay, if you look at the larger track, tracking red there, okay? Um, those are all duplexes, single-story duplexes. Um, there is no two-story. Um, and there's only 30 buildings on that much larger tract of land than, than what's in front of us today. That little green section of land, um, they want to build twice as many on that small tract of land that's on both of those two red tracts of land. So it obviously doesn't conform to what the neighborhood is. They want to build two-story. There's no two-stories down there. Uh, there's nothing but duplexes down there. Um, and they want to do it on, on a very small tract of land. Um, I have never met, uh, the, uh, well, Mrs. Stigall before in my life, but she spoke 100% correct. There is all kinds of reasons to deny this and not a good reason to, to approve it. All the land around it is ag land, okay? Um, so it, it, it just doesn't conform to building a apartment complex there. Um, that's one problem. Another problem is the bridge is only 17 foot wide. That doesn't even meet the minimum fire code for the fire truck, which requires 20 foot. The road going down Old Shakertown Road, we measured it this morning. It's 18 foot. The road doesn't even comply. So to put 65 unit apartment complex there makes absolutely no sense. We do not believe that that is the best use of land. Um, Kevin Nesbit, been friends with him for years, trust him, great guy. But here, and here's an error in what Kevin said. Kevin said, well, we might not put 65. Well, if they're not going to put 65, if they're going to build duplexes, they're already approved for that. Uh, that's not their plan. Their plan is to get this NCC and go out there and build 65 units. And that's not the best use. It doesn't conform with anything that's there. Um, Mrs. Stigall talked about the runoff, the creek, the sewer system. Every time it rains, the manhole in front of their property bubbles up from the inflow of, 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 of that rainwater. Um, this is just the wrong place for this. I mean, if he wanted to go build duplexes, he can do that now. That's not his plan. And, uh, um, Kevin also stated that there was a need for additional rentals in town. Love Kevin, but that's an error too, because I own the local rental company, which is Danville Rental Property. Um, there's not a need, um, uh, for more homes. We just approved eight, 80 units being built on Hill, Hillendale. Um, Barry Metcalf has built beautiful units down on Highland Court. Um, Bluegrass Estates has new apartments, so, so they didn't prove their point by saying there's a need because there's not a need. They didn't prove their point by saying that two-story townhomes fits with this neighborhood. They didn't prove their point by saying 65 units on a smaller tract of land. This just doesn't work. I like to be a guy that's pretty easy to get along with and go along with anything. Been in this town most of my life, never been before you for anything. Um, but I just disagree with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, Chad, attorney on behalf of Mr. and Ms. Cole that own 711 Old Shakertown Road. My personal address is 902 Nacoma. Um, we spoke a lot this morning about compatibility. Well, if we look at the map, the compatibility is not necessarily multifamily units. The compatibility is keep it where it's at. Every other house in the street is a single-family home. On the backside of this property is agriculture. Let's keep it where it's at. That's where it needs to be. That's suffice for the last however many years it's been that way. There's no need to change it. And we've also spoke about broad strokes of the community and the, and the city landscape. Well, if we keep on this path, the entire map might as well be red, rather than green like it is. Broad strokes means just keep making everything red. Let's keep it single-family where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, any other comments, Kevin or Stephen?
You know, it, it's interesting, um, that Mr. Cole says, um, he doesn't, um, think that this is an appropriate use, that it's going to be too much traffic, too mu- but he's got his now. Uh, he says there are other areas where there are other apartments. That's true, but, uh, um, are you to say that, no, we have to go to this one developer or that one developer to live? Uh, the general, uh, plan is to have a variety of, um, available areas to live in and available price points, uh, speaking to Ms. Stigall's concerns. If, if you talk about leaving this is, is, um, agricultural, um, that's kind of absurd. Uh, it, it's around that, what, what can you do with a four-acre farm? Nothing. Um, and as far as Ms. Stigall's, um, she doesn't live there. Uh, she hasn't, uh, it's a nice, uh, farmhouse. Um, I've been in it my, uh, she, she leased it out for a period of time, several years for a Montessori middle school and, uh, wasn't concerned about the traffic then. Um, as Mr. Hunter pointed out, there is the triangle on the other side. When we get to the, uh, site plan stage, the zone change, uh, stage, uh, you need to understand that's where we're going to be talking about and have the approval of the city, that they do have a sufficient infrastructure, that the city streets, uh, if they require a city, uh, a traffic study, uh, we've looked at the, um, traffic study. Um, and if you look at the average number of trips for the type of development we're talking about, I don't think the traffic study will be necessary, but if the city requests that, we'll certainly, um, do that. And the city has to sign off as far as, um, saying that there's adequate facilities as far as, um, uh, sewer service and things like that. Yes, the sewer, the city has a sewer problem. We all know that. We've had it for 30-plus years and, uh, uh, that's something that, uh, finally, um, because of a number of things, the city's trying to upgrade. And, uh, if you look at it again, as Mr. Hunter said in broad strokes, this is the compatible use. This is the highest and best use and this is the appropriate use for this property. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
To speak on what Kevin just said, um, the wa- the way that I understand this process to work is you have to approve them to change the land map first. Um, I think we have demonstrated that there's not a need to change the land, the land map. Um, so there will be no need for, for zoning changes. Um, we're here to talk about changing the use of this land. As the neighbors have stated, as I've sta- stated, there isn't a need. And if you look at the current zoning of their land, they already have GRA. Um, so, so he, and he's not asking to build duplexes. He's asking to build apartment complex, 65 units on that little tract of land that's surrounded by all that green land there. So, so, so they are not conforming with what the neigh- the neighborhood is by any means. Um, um, they can get up here and they can talk and talk and talk, but it's not the truth. What the truth is, is when you look at the map, it's green. And, and then, and then when you look at the land next to it, you have little duplexes, little single-family duplexes that I didn't personally build. I, I bought mine, but, um, so I'm, I am not a developed, I'm not a dev- developer. That's not my talent. That's not the talent that God gave me. I'm just a guy with some rental property. But any, anyone can look at that map and see it's green and not red. And, and, and anyone can look at that map and see that little green section we're talking about. And anyone can look at that map and see that little green section we're talking about is at best half, maybe only a third of the two red sections. They're wanting to put sixty-five units on that little piece of land. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Paul, I was saying, I'm not telling the truth. That's what you just said.
Kevin, I'm hundred percent apologize.
Y'all need to debate. You need to go out there and debate.
I just wanted to...
Anybody else want to comment?
I apologize, Kevin. I'm sorry.
If you have some new information?
Again, as your staff, I just clarify a couple of things. This is what we do here. Have public hearings, and we have good ones, by the way. I want to make sure clear on a couple of issues. Duplexes are multifamily. There's no splitting hairs on that. Single-family detached is single-family. Condominiums are single-family. Platted townhomes where you can buy your unit, is single-family. So the ownership of those units is what really determines that kind of our zoning verbiage. But duplexes on the ground, that's multifamily. So whether it's duplexes, townhomes, apartments, fourplexes, eightplexes, sixteen... That's multifamily in our world as planners. That's multifamily. That's how we would look at it in the zoning ordinance. NCC allows single-family. Duplexes are multifamily, meaning sixteen, fourplexes. Going back and talking about smart growth a tad bit, we have... Duplexes aren't the most efficient land use. They're what we built in a time in this country. We built a lot of single-family homes, and they're kind of the highest pecking order, as you guys know, and we protect those areas. Duplexes were evolved in communities on ten thousand square foot lots, so you're putting basically four buildings on an acre, eight families. If you start to think about smart growth principles in an infill development settings, you maximize density when you can. Sometimes it's not appropriate. Both applicants, both parties have said that. What's compatible? Duplex, apartments, as far as the land use goes to us, it's multifamily. The compatibility is very clear because it's outlined in your staff report, and I'll just point this out. The challenge the planning commission has is compatibility on page four. I'm sorry. On page... Find it. I'm in the zone change. I'm doing the same thing. Page four, I was correct, in your staff report. And I'll just read what the planning commission's approval request is based on. This is the criteria, and I'll just read it all the way through. The proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding development as demonstrated by the applicant. So you've kind of heard that part of it. This review should include a flume compatibility assessment of proposed use, which includes, but is not limited to, location, bulk of buildings, other structures, building height, building materials, intensity of use. Again, duplex, multifamily, fourplex, that kind of goes to that. Density of the development, location of parking, signage. In addition, applicant must prove that the proposed flume amendment will not result in the development exceeds the capacity of existing public infrastructure and/or facilities such as roads, water, sewer, stormwater, police, fire parks, public education. So again, what you guys are always looking at is how is the development gonna impact our community? Sometimes it's what touches it next door. Sometimes it's a broad part of the community as far as all the things. The way you all figure that out is to hear about the project and talk about the conditions in detail, which you've started. And you've heard sixty-five or whatever number. You've heard traffic. All those are relevant in determining compatibility with the neighborhood. But going back to what I hear is being proposed, where townhome's been used, but they're apartments. That's correct. Sixty-five apartments on four acres comes in at that sixteen-unit density or in that range that fits that moderate density category. There's places in town that's appropriate, and there's places that's not. And that's where the challenge you guys have is to figure that out. But as you know, and again, zoom back out to the land use map, we don't have agriculture anywhere in the town. So even though we have agriculture uses, they're highly protected and highly encouraged to stay. But as far as the future development of our community, we don't label agriculture in the urban core of Danville or around these urban service areas. That's not smart growth or smart development patterns either. That's why it's all yellow. Our whole town's yellow, meaning low density. And if that's the pattern that we want, that's what we'll build and develop in this community, are platted, single-family detached lots. But you guys know multiple housing types are now what people desire, patio homes, assisted living, duplexes, condos, townhomes, and every mix thereof is how communities evolve with housing choice and housing types. But if your town is just single-family and duplexes, that becomes a problem someday because there are other needs out there like condominiums and townhomes and patio homes. The other thing that I think was mentioned, just want to clarify. The zoning is split-zoned currently. That does not allow for duplexes. As mentioned, that is GRA and ag. That pretty much means one family, one house. Now, the option anyone that owns this property, or this property, or this property is, is if you figure out, if you got enough frontage, you might be able to figure out how to cut that into, let's say, four or five lots and put four or five houses. But the ag tract would be pretty much not much you could do back here. But this is a split property, which again, looking at the applicant's side of it, that's not desirable either to have split zoning on anyone's property. If anything, the GRA line ought to be cleaned up or something of that nature. But at this point, depending on how much frontage, you might be able to figure out a way to create some big, long lots in there and maybe get four or five houses. Again, is that the best use of the property on four acres? When we have water, sewer, and roads, maybe not the best road. That gets to the core of how we develop our community, but you cannot do duplexes in GRA by right. That would require some other zone change, either NCC or GRB, which is what we got on the two sides. And as we heard the neighbor say, and we also have agriculture on two sides. And her property's even got a little split zoning. The GRA line, for some reason, comes across, and her property's clearly ag, but a little portion of that's GRA, so. Thank you. I'm glad to answer questions you guys might have.
Questions from the commission?
Yes, sir.
As often we do, we're confusing two different things during this process. And I understand it has to be sort of a chicken and egg thing, but...
Yes, sir.
The future land use map that was... It's before us right now. If, as you said, right now, it's residential use. So if it were, if we were to make the flume change, that would obviously open the door for a zone change. But then that would be, are they gonna base their zone change on the fact that the future land use map says it's multifamily?
And this is the catch-22 of...
Is that their only basis for zone change?
Well, it might be their only basis. You all have other bases, interesting enough. The moderate density, if it's successful, yes, they're gonna come forward and say, now that the flume's been amended, we are proposing just what we just told you about, apartments on four point one nine zero acres in the moderate density range. You all could still determine sixty-five's too many. That's when you zero in on the conditions. You guys have the ability to say, maybe two-story is not appropriate. Maybe we don't want to see vinyl. We want this or that. Maybe you say, we just want duplexes only. I hope not, because I'm not sure that's where we're going and dictating housing types. I think we gotta let the applicant bring the product forward. But yes, their basis will be, now that the flume has been amended, we'd like to now argue our zone change. But the zone change criteria is compliance with the comprehensive plan, meaning the flume, but the conditions matter too. And if you guys don't feel the conditions meet your expectations of the neighbors, you could deny the zone change on those factors. Even though it now complies with the flume, it makes it harder. So that's really why this is kind of the first step. And if you guys don't feel the zone change is appropriate or compatible, you would choose maybe not to approve the flume and just stop it right there.
Well, I get... Personally, I don't have a problem with the flume change. And what you just read, that the applicant must prove that the proposed flume amendment will not result in development that exceeds the capacity of existing public infrastructure in water, road, sewer, stormwater. Has that been proven?
That's for you all to determine, in my opinion.
So do we do that now, or do we do that when we do the zone? I assume that would be the...
And it can be.
Have to discuss in the zone change.
And the tricky thing there, let's talk about water and sewer. That capacity's not determined by us, and that connectivity's not determined by us. How we typically do that, if you're already zoned right, for example, as you heard, that happens at the site plan or at the building permit. The city of Danville would have to determine, can we put X number of units on this property? We're supposed to dabble in that a little bit and determine, is this gonna go over that capacity? Water and sewer's tricky because we really don't have that authority. Roads, y'all have some authority, because you could... They have made a commitment on the traffic study. You could beef that up to some degree. There might be a road solution. We could figure out right here on the floor. That you guys have the ability to put a condition into play. That's not unusual at planning commissions to do that. Those binding elements, or not binding, those development conditions might need some wordsmithing. There's only a few of them. Maybe there needs to be double the number. And I wasn't gonna show this till later, but the applicant did put forward some pictures. Again, it's relevant in the zone change, but we'll show them now, what gets compatibility. The type of units he either has built or desires to build. We heard some stuff about some projects here in Danville. This developer's not from here. He's built some stuff other places or has desired to. So he submitted some pictures. I put on the PowerPoint. Again, the idea, these are not platted townhomes, but they are two-story apartments. If you want to get the verbiage just right, he's using the word townhomes, but they're two-story, two-bedroom, thousand fifty square feet townhomes. The number of buildings have not been determined, whether it's gonna be six or eight or fourteen. So we don't know how many buildings, because again, the site has some constrictions that still need to be worked out and engineered. These are examples that were submitted to us as just typical. They look like apartments. People use the word townhomes, whatever. This is the product type. By the way, you're looking at three different products, in my opinion. You're seeing roof relief, bump outs on the building. That one, to me, is a tad bit more attractive, although there's some vinyl brick mix. Some of the doors have porches covered, some don't. This one's more what I'd call a traditional, older-style apartment style. And then here is what you see built in a lot of towns, not as much building relief through those units, solid roof type. So there's architectural components that can come into play that can turn this product into something different or something very similar that we see in the community. And that's where those conditions come in.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the conditions that we might impose on this in terms of density and all that type of thing is for, would we be, something done in the next phase, which is a zone change?
The zone change. That's correct. That's where you guys...
And all we're talking about now is, do we think that a flume change is... The proposed flume change is compatible with a long-term plan for the town?
You're exactly correct. And again, to go back is a four-acre tract, low density. The development pattern that's compatible, the development opportunity that the planning commission desires in that district, again, allows up to five units to the acre, but they are detached, traditional homes only.
I don't have an issue with the flume change. I just want to make sure we're not backing ourselves in the corner when we do that, that we have some leeway in the development that we can, if it gets to that point, that we could get a median ground between the neighbors and the developer and the city and the plan zone and whatever. But that we're not gonna be locked into any certain parameters at this point.
Yeah. The flume amendment, without a doubt, makes the zone change somewhat easier because we've kind of, in a sense, set the tone for that next step. There are ways, you guys, because again, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, we're looking at the conditions, we're looking at the project, and you guys can vote either way on that. But we are putting an importance on the flume. That's why we're making applicants amend the flume. And yes, that would be a big part of the criteria, is to say now, the zone change request now complies with the comprehensive plan, i.e. the flume. And that's what we're proposing. But the conditions still matter, and the zoning ordinance gives you all authority to review these cases based on those development conditions. For example, traffic, all those things. But the flume does put the bar up there where that's really the thing we're looking at ninety percent of the time.
And I gotta say, the issue I have is our own procedure here says the applicant must prove that the proposed flume amendment will not result in development that exceeds the capacity. Because I don't...
And the way they would do that is to testify right here that they're willing to make a change or add a condition at the appropriate time of whatever type to...
So do they have to do that now?
They could do that now. If that's a request to the planning commission, they could do that now. And I'll let Henry jump in here, but they could. If that's a concern you have specifically, let's say sewer, you could ask that they do something to address that concern. And if you feel that has not been met, then you personally could say, I don't think the compatibility assessment's been met. Yes, sir. Well, this, Commissioner Kelly here.
So if nothing happened and this stayed just like it is, because it's partially zoned agriculture, could it be a working farm? Like with cows, horses, pigs, a kennel?
Well, it's a little tricky. It does have a single-family structure on it. The split zone might not get the farm activities on the GRA end, but you could do the farm on the back end. Not the most desirable. We'd probably want to figure out how to clean that up if they... Again, this is the property owner. Not sure, you know, they want to farm it, but you would think we'd fix that. The other issue was brought up, our definition of an active working farm is a five-acre tract or bigger. So it doesn't even really meet the definition of an agricultural farm. It meets the definition of our agricultural residential type of farm, which is a house. So really, the farming activities could be performed on that back corner. We couldn't stop them under the zoning ordinance. Not sure they're practical. It's more likely it'd be a single-family development on the GRA end. You couldn't do the kennel on one end, but you could on the other, I guess, technically.
Steve, clarify how if we approve the change of flume, we're not, in essence, also doing the zone change approval. How are they totally separate?
The zone change approval, under the state law, says the applicant has to prove they're in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is the flume, is the goals and objectives, is everything in that two-hundred-page document. If the flume is amended, obviously, they've taken a big step and shown, hey, we're now gonna be able to argue we're in compliance with the flume. Your safety net is the zoning ordinance and those conditions. The zoning ordinance in Article eighteen clearly says, the planning commission may ask for conditions of a development. And if those conditions are not satisfactory to you to meet compatibility, you guys could deny a zone change based on the lack of those conditions. The applicant could argue, we're now in compliance with the flume, therefore, we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan. We think we're good. That's why this case does matter, and they are connected.
So I guess I'm confused in the fact that if the flume amendment is approved, it seems like that's also approving a zone change in and of itself.
It almost makes it a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
The only safety net, or when we start to zero in on the conditions, anything we've determined, the moderate density is appropriate. But is sixteen units appropriate versus eight units to the acre? Townhomes versus fourplexes? That's where you start to zero in on the zone change.
And the difficult part is that if someone just came and wanted a flume change, and we're not knowing what the next step is, I think it would be a no-brainer. And then by the fact that you know what's coming, I think we all have trepidations about whether that is appropriate. That is muddying the waters on this, which I think is a slam dunk. So I think we're all concerned. We don't want to back ourselves into a corner. But I think everyone has some issues with the next stage.
Sure. And again, we'll let the attorney jump in here, but at some point, if you guys aren't comfortable with the flume, there's an opportunity to deal with that now. And maybe, what I hear you saying is, maybe the development isn't at a point you feel it is compatible. Maybe you're saying, we think the moderate density's compatible, but this specific at sixty-five units...
What it gets me is, applicant must prove. I mean, I didn't know that was there, but that's some strong verbiage, if you ask me.
And again, you guys remember that...
How do you prove that?
Well, again, when we put this forward, that we're gonna let folks amend the flume. Again, we're almost having a workshop here. This is new to us. We said we were gonna set the bar high. We just weren't gonna willy-nilly amend the flume just because it looked good on the map. Staff can do that. Actually, I can bring you a change. No. But I think the bar was high. The applicants had to prove that this was reasonable. The old way we did is we just waited five or ten years, and we fixed the map or didn't fix the map, and we just assumed that's the preferred land use. Clearly, we want to allow applicants to bring ideas forward. The bar's high, and if you don't feel the applicant has proved that to you, the burden is on the applicant, not the staff and not even the opposition. The burden's on the applicant to prove that they have met that compatibility argument.
Terry?
So, you know, if we decide that we aren't comfortable yet, that the applicant has proven the flume amendment, their alternative would now be to go to the city?
No.
Go to the...
Flume amendments are, rest one hundred percent with you guys. I think the fair...
It sounds like we're asking to make a technical decision, and we haven't got data.
That future land use map falls within you all's authority to amend that map procedurally. Like like amending the comprehensive plan. Again, the comprehensive plan, goals and objectives are the only thing goes on out to those parent governments. We make changes to the map, change to the plan, that rests with you all to determine is the appropriate land use. But look at it from the other side. Every zone change that's come before you in the past, we look at the flume. And you decide, does the flume, is it is it giving us the right answer or not? In this case, you're taking an opportunity to fine-tune the flume when you see it appropriate or not. If you're struggling with the development, then you're struggling with the development. The compatibility is based in that. And again, Vince had a question. I think Henry's wanted to chime in there too.
We were just talking about Winter Hall and places like that where there's only a few houses and where traffic is a problem and things. And I know this goes with Jeff, the chicken before the egg, but we do have to consider it because the we're almost giving a tacit approval. If we approve the zone, the the flume change and, you know, thinking about a hundred cars there rather than one car coming down Winter Hall is is a big difference to me. All that's all I'm saying. I'm I'm trying to put it in perspective to our other, it's about the same distance off of the main road. Okay, there's an even worse issue with the traffic because of the V-point. Okay? We haven't even gotten the siding road for all the other things that are going on in that area. I I have a real, you know, it's it's not even the 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 person who wants to develop its fault. It's it's the fact that there's just so many things going on in that area that are in flux. That how can we make a decision about that if we are thinking about anything but but the narrow thing that 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 we're trying to talk about today? I don't think we could think about that one thing.
So let me give you an example on what what you all have to do as a commission. The flume is tricky, but let's just use, for example, this property came into you tomorrow. And it's low density. And the applicants proposing low density. You're in the same place procedurally as that. When the property's in compliance with the flume, how how would you have navigated that anyhow? You zoom on down to the conditions. That's low density. And let's say someone came in and proposed four thousand square foot lot, two hundred homes there. Even though the flume is in compliance, and that isn't one of the applicant's arguments is, hey, I'm in compliance with low density. How would the planning commission navigate that when it's in compliance with the flume? You're zooming down. How many cars is too many cars? How many homes is too many homes? Is the water going to work? Is the sewer going to work? It's the same process. The flume dictates the preferred land use. You guys, you guys zero in on how that land use is developed at the zone change level through those conditions. And that's where your authority lays today. And you would do that right now if it was in compliance with the flume and we didn't have to have the flume amendment. The zone change, you guys would be going down to the level and all of those things are they matter and you can make your decision on all of them or one of them.
Well, that's why we're muddying the waters.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's 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 a big issue. We're making a decision that could create a great expense for the county and city. You see, because the the amount of people that we cover, it would seem to imply that there would be a need to upgrade.
Well, the developer has to do that. In my opinion, the developer gets.
On the street level? No, they do it in the they do it in the subdivision.
Let's keep on moving through this and I'll explain what we would do. The Vince, at the zone change level, the applicant is committed that they do a traffic study. You heard him say, if Danville requests. You all might say, you will do a traffic study. And everything that shakes out of that, you will improve as a developer. That's why we put the traffic study verbiage in there. So that's one way that it doesn't fall on the city. If if you all were to say, we want a traffic study, no exception. And whatever recommendation comes out of that, you shall build before you break ground on the duplexes or the townhomes, then it's not on the city. You you might have, who knows what that traffic study may shake out.
It's not the traffic, it's the water and the sewage.
Well, they have to build that too.
That are implied. To me, you know, we're 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 creating whatever's at the street level. I know that they will take care of the the property because that's a necessity. But I mean, are we going to imply, say, well, we don't care what it costs for the city and county, is the state going to pay for it?
The developer has to do that. The developer would have to.
Know because, I mean, we have to make a decision now. It's sort of like chicken before the egg.
I don't think we can answer those questions then, what we're going to.
But the point is that we, as Jeff said, are we implying this by making this decision now? That's that's my whole.
I think all that's contingent on any case that the developer comes before you all and says, I've got an idea. Ultimately, there's still a site plan, there's still engineering, there's still stormwater, water, sewer, city of Danville, all those things have to be handled. But but it is correct, you're moving, you're starting the process with this, and the zone change is the next step. The developer never knows the end game until he's sitting down at the city of Danville and they tell him exactly what he has to build to get that capacity or to get that service.
Henry, you got any comments?
I do. I wanted to offer a technical point with regard to whether your approval of this land use map amendment is then a rubber stamp for the zone map amendment. And it's not because the land use map is not the entirety of the comprehensive plan. You can find other grounds in the comprehensive plan to deny applications even after there's been a land use map amendment. Furthermore, as we've been kind of getting at, the development plan still offers you some teeth to get at some of these same issues. I will concede Mr. Baird's right that this flume amendment proposal talks about a lot of proof of capacity and things like that. But if you approve based on those criteria now, you still can get a second bite at the apple.
Any other discussion?
If you would like, we could have AG here to tell you about the public infrastructure.
If it's new information that we have not heard, we don't want to keep. Keep spinning the same wheel.
I I think this is better than ever.
I'm Dale Shepperson with AGE, and there is infrastructure there. It's there. Will it have to be upgraded? We will, as that as that comes up, we will look into that, of course. And if it does need to be upgraded, it it will have to be upgraded. To me, we really don't even need to be talking about that yet. Because a- as Mr. Smith said, the flume doesn't have anything to do with that. Basically, in my opinion, the flume, all that that has to do with, in the future, does this land suitable for multifamily? That's what the flume is. After that, if it is, then we go to a zone change. That's when all of the conditions applies. If the zone change is approved, then we move on to a site plan. And that is where the traffic study comes in, the sewer comes in, the water comes in, the water runoff comes in. All of that stuff comes into play. We have to answer every one of those questions. So to me, right now, the flume is what we need to be talking about, which is the future land use, I mean, or future land use map.
Thank you. If it's something new, is it something you've not already said? Yes or no?
It's something new. All right. First of all, as as I started this conversation, I told you I'm not a speaker.
You already said that.
Okay.
Tell us stuff you haven't said.
With that being said, I want to apologize to Kevin in front of everyone. Would not have been sort of Kevin, I'm 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 uneducated. I did that by mistake. Now, the something new is, he just said that if you approve the flume, flume, that the zoning change is in the fut- the fut- future. Well, let me tell you when the fut- the future is. It's the next thing that's on your list. The future's right now. So I think the residents have spoke up. I do not think they've met their burden. I think Mr. Baird spoke very well stating that they didn't meet their burden. So I'll I'll sit down. Thank you.
I'm going to declare the public hearing closed on item two with regard to this issue. Any comments from the commission? If not, we will need a motion.
Again, on this topic of must prove the proposed flume amendment will not result in development exceeds, et cetera, et cetera. I I think we're trying to impose too many requirements on it at this stage. I think we have to look at is, do they have access to sewer? Yes. Do they access to water? Yes. Do they access to roads? Yes. Does it meet the capacity? I don't know. We won't know until we get to the next stage. And so I guess, you know, when I look at what's been presented so far, I don't see, I I don't think that the proposal of making this moderate density is incompatible with the flume. We have to get to the zone change yet to see whether or not what restrictions we'll put on that. So I guess I would I would make the motion to to amend the flume to allow this moderate-density residential housing designation for that piece of property since property on both sides of it already would meet that requirement. And I don't think changing that would have any further effect on property, surrounding property values than what the existing housing already has. And so I I would make the motion that from a flume change standpoint, that we do change it to, from its current low residency residential to moderate-density residential. And then when we get to the zone change part, we can put restrictions, additional restrictions and such on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Terry, can you somewhat shorten that motion to simply approve the land use map amendment?
Yes.
Based on the documents and so forth and not add that about when we get to future stuff? Because that that should not be part of the motion.
I know, I know. He's got it on the back.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, I guess I would make we we approve the proposed future land use map amendment based on the testimony and documents presented at the public hearing that has method directed to amend the flume as outlined in chapter nine of the comprehensive plan.
Good. Jeff, seconded. Question discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor? Vince? One, two, three, four. All opposed. Two opposed. Motion carries. Item three, Old Shaker Town LLC application to rezonate property tract of land containing four point one nine oh acres at seven oh seven Shaker Town Road, Danville, in touch.
All righty. So we had a pre, we had an application filed on January second. I'll keep this one short because I think we've gone through some of this. But we are looking at the zone change staff report, page one. Applicants Old Shaker Town LLC, location seven oh seven, Old Shaker Town Road, four point one nine zero acres. And again, current zoning, as you see on that map, is split AR one agriculture and GRA, single-family detached development. Proposed zoning request is NCC. As you guys have already heard, that described neighborhood conservation, classification. That district used to allow other things. It was revised in two thousand eleven. The NCC district is single-family, duplexes, or multifamily, without any caps, therefore, on numbers. But some general caps in the zoning ordinance on how the development occurs in NCC. There are some conditional uses that can flow through that, but not many. Under on page one, future land use map, as you just saw, moderate density is what was being proposed. When the application was filed, it was low density. You guys have recently just changed it to moderate density. You guys know what that is. Page two is where all the discussion that we just had comes zeros right on down to your all's plate right there, which is the general development plan review. And Article eighteen point ten of the zoning ordinance says the following. As a condition to grant in any zone change, the planning commission will require the submission of a conceptual development plan, which, when agreed upon, shall be followed. Now, I think in the past, you guys have seen conceptual plans done differently. Sometimes they're very graphic, look like site plans. We just did one recently. It was very generic. That conceptual plan is not defined. It can be written or it can be graphic. In this cha- in this case, the applicant chose a written concept plan, which are those conditions. If you guys want a graphic concept plan, there was one initially started, but everything was in flux with all these technical issues. And it looked like a site plan and the units have changed, the numbers have changed, driveway, all these things have changed. But at this point, what you have is a written general development plan or concept plan in those five conditions. And I'll read those conditions that the applicant has put forward. Again, those would be binding to the property, recorded with the property, and the developer would be bound by those parameters. I think as we just discussed for several minutes, I it appears these aren't maybe good enough or detailed enough to address several concerns, and they either may need to be wordsmithed here or rethought and resubmitted if if that's what you guys see fit. But here are the five conditions. The maximum height of all buildings will be two stories. The maximum number of units on seven oh seven Shaker Town Road will be sixty-five. Initially, when this application was filed, the number was in the eighties. We talked about that and it was resubmitted at sixty-five. And as you heard, that is a maximum cap that may actually not be the attainable number based on site engineering. The developer is amenable to designing around a single point of entry to the property if requested. Kind of generic in nature, amenable. I think what the staff was hoping we would see in more verbiage was, how are we going to get in and out of the property? Are you going to have multiple access points? I think we all sort of agreed that there's going to be a single access point to Old Shaker Town Road. And then what happens at that point gets a little tricky. But I think that's what number three is attempting to do, saying, we're going to have a single access point on a property. How that's shaped and width and turn lanes in and out, I think that's still to be determined. Four is on materials. Materials for building exteriors will be brick, vinyl, stone, wood, or some combination. Again, that's a little loose. That's about everything. I've seen developments where we say certain words and not certain words. Again, I'm not an architect. But that falls within your all's authority too on on how these things evolve. Again, the whole goal is to achieve compatibility with the neighborhood. I I've seen some planning commissioners say, well, maybe we don't want to do vinyl. But if there's vinyl in the neighborhood, then why would you be legislating it out? I've seen some planning who said, we want all brick, or we want hardy and brick, or stone veneer and brick, or not two stories or whatever. That gets it really detailed. But at some point, the goal here is you guys are trying to blend the neighborhood with a new project. And then number five, a traffic study to be done if requested by the city of Danville as a development proceeds at site plan or permitting stages. So there's your, there's your concept plan in detail. And again, I think it probably could use a few things. Now that I've heard these comments, I think when we initially got the case, we thought, well, that that's pretty detailed. But let me talk about the traffic real quick. And I'm not an engineer. I'm just a planner, and you guys know I love to draw on maps. But one thing I think's interesting, and I mentioned this, now, the city may tell us no, state may tell us no, but we've talked, we, I think we all recognize the width of Old Shaker Town's probably not the best. But we do have duplexes and apartments and houses. And this is a city street, and this is a state road. And so today, that authority lies with the city of Danville in Kentucky District Seven. You put sixty-five units on here. The traffic engineering trip generation manual says a two-bedroom townhome generates about seven trips a day. So I'd have to do math on that real quick on sixty-five times seven, but whatever that is, it's a whole lot of cars. It's around five hundred. So meets our threshold of when a traffic study is needed. A traffic study could say, access here, access there. You could see if you put the access here, you got shorter stacking. As you heard, folks that maybe don't know how to jump on Old Shaker Town and Town might come this way and have to double back and in and out. As you heard this neighbor say it, seems like a really tricky intersection. The other end is tricky. We don't know if the trips are going to town or going to the bypass. That's what a traffic study would tell us. Traffic study would determine where we think these trips are going and what direction and what improvements are needed. That's the beauty of a traffic study. And what you want to do is require a traffic study and make the developer make all the improvements when they need them. So what I think what the traffic study would do is tell us where that access point ought to be, either left or right. But I'll tell you what the solution is, and I'm just going cross-country like the crow flies. The solution is punch a entrance out here. And I don't know this, he he now owns this property. I don't know topography and culverts. I've heard there's culverts and flood plains and water and on and on. I'm a planner. I don't worry about all that that stuff. I'm just telling you, conceptually, there's a road and there's a road. Let's figure out how to get get there. What you could do is you could put this entrance somewhere on this frontage and you could see how we could have a nice, parallel, nice T-intersection, and you would terminate this end of the street. This development could get here, come straight on out. So you could come here and go here. This access is up on the road and you just terminate this part of the road. And Old Shaker Town would come here and stop at a new intersection. It goes right across. It could be up here. It could be down here. That's for engineers to figure out. But you could see how we could figure out a traffic solution if we had a traffic study or if you guys chose to do that right now as a condition. So Shake, but the the players are the city of Danville and KDOT. This is Danville Street, so there'd have to be some discussion with Danville on how Old Shaker Town potentially could be improved. I would think this all happens at the developer's cost. He he's the one that's impacting that. That's what's fair. But you could see how easy it would be to either terminate the road and put a travelway in. It could be a public access or build a roadway that we could come in at some point and and look at site distance and look at the curve and figure out what's the safest way to do that. Because clearly, this isn't the most desirable, and these folks are already experiencing all that today. So that that's a that's a condition that potentially could be talked about. But the traffic study is a jumping-off point of that. That's my layperson planner, bird's eye view. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is, they're, agree to a traffic study if requested by the city.
You guys could say, and again, I'd let the applicant speak, but you guys could say you will do a traffic study prior to submission of a site plan. That's where these conditions come into play and the authority you all have. The applicant's saying, we're willing to do one if the city asks for one. If the city doesn't ask for one, there's the potential to head straight on then to the site plan and the permit, we don't look at traffic. If you guys make that requirement, a traffic study has to be done. Those aren't expenses, or cheap, as you all know, those could be $5,000 to $10,000 or whatever, plus the improvements. If that's what you all say, then that's what the developer's bound by. That gets to the heart of the ability you all have to zero in on specific conditions. So I'll finish off the staff report real quick, and then I'll sit down and let the applicant discuss that. But again, those are your five conditions. I think the neighbor next door's brought up some great issues too, about her property lines, her view sheds, the development style. You guys could determine some of those compatibility issues with setbacks, with building heights, with parking lot layouts, and again, a lot of those things we don't know till later. Comprehensive plan review starts on page three, very similar to what you saw in the flume. Goals and objectives are outlined on three. Future land use is mentioned on four. And here, going to our commissioner Baird's concern on page four. This talks about the flume. Right in the middle of the page, development review provisions. It said, requested rezoning shall be reviewed for consistency with the flume and the development provisions below. So there's the kind of catch-22 we have. The flume matters, but the development matters. The final paragraph there under development review provision says, and I highlighted this, "All proposals for new development must be assessed to determine their compatibility with existing surrounding development." We don't define surrounding, is it adjacent, is it regional? And we don't do that for a reason. It's different every time. Compatibility may be shown because the proposed use is the same as the surrounding development, or it may be established by site design, buffering, and control of access through the adjacent neighborhood, or other agreed development conditions. There's where all this comes together in one paragraph. The flume matters, but the project matters. It goes right back to those conditions are what drive your all's approval on this, when you hear neighborhood opposition, and you hear a developer putting forward conditions. Not much else I need to go through on the staff report, except you know what they're asking for. We said no staff items of concern on page six. Obviously, after hearing some of the neighbors' concerns, I think I would echo a few of those, especially on traffic and access. That's just, again, I think those are valid concerns. And then the bottom of page six, CARES 100, 213 specifically tells you guys how you make zone change map amendments. And there's the verbiage right there, and our attorney just outlined that for you in general terms. And then we got our canned motions on page seven, up or down, either way, whichever way you guys go. I'll be glad to answer any questions on the zone change or conditions, and again, applicant's here with his attorney, and I believe there's neighbors here in opposition.
So we could ask for the condition of 65 units on that four-acre piece of property to be lowered to 25?
You guys can negotiate conditions here, you could ask the applicant to, if that's where you're heading, you could ask the applicant to resubmit a development plan and table the hearing if that's what you chose. Or you could get down to the exact number here, based on a back and forth with the applicant. You sure can. I guess that's correct, right, Henry, on chapter?
Where does the development plan?
It's just those five conditions. There was a concept plan submitted, but it was with the 80 units, it was...
Well, I thought this is, it should be accompanied by a general development plan.
Those conditions are the general, they can either be the conditions, or they can be a site-based drawing, or they can be some hybrid of either. We don't define what a concept plan. When we finally get to the zoning ordinance amendment at some point, we're going to kind of fix some of those general language issues in the zoning ordinance that doesn't give us clear guidance on how you guys review these. But concept plan historically can be a drawing, or written set of conditions, or combination. And again, all that's valid. You'd hope the applicant's hearing all this, and maybe he's willing to come forward and maybe throw some conditions out here, if we're at an impasse. But that, again, gets back to you and applicant working through those.
Questions?
Again, I'm Kevin Nesbitt. The, just so, you know, as Mr. Baird pointed out, we could have come in here and just asked for the land use amendment, and, again, but wanted to be upfront and lay all this out for you, but not only do we believe that the zone change is appropriate, we believe these, and hearing the concerns, my clients are willing to have that as a condition that prior to, as Mr. Hunter offered up, changing the wording of the development conditions to be a traffic study to be done prior to site plan submission. They have kept that little triangle where Old Shakertown and Shakertown meet out of this because there was some thought that that may be necessary for retention of stormwater or traffic issues. And so they're willing to do the traffic study, and if necessary, if there is a stormwater problem, that's a basin that could be looked at. We talked about adding that into the zone change, but we thought we could just keep that out because they do own that, they do control it, and they can make use of it if it's necessary as part of this development. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Of course, we have the developer, and we still also have AGE Engineering here. But just for the record, I believe that this request is in compliance with CARES 100.213, in that it's in compliance with the future land use map and the adopted comprehensive plan.
So, Mr. Nesbitt, what can be built on there now if the zone change is not approved?
Well, you heard, single-family, right now, it's single-family, you haven't changed anything, you haven't made a zone change.
No, we changed the map, yes.
You've changed the map. So you're still at the same place you were. Single-family detached.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone else like, anyone else like to speak in favor of this zone change? We're in public hearings. So if you have a question, you want to speak in favor of it, come to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Morning. My name is James Boucher, A12 Moffey Lane, Lexington, Kentucky. I'm one of the partners as a developer of this project, and my other partner couldn't be here for a family emergency this morning. I just kind of want to say that we seem to be getting caught up on some very specific things at this point, and we keep hearing the 65 number. But as developers, you know, our kind of job in this whole thing is to put the pieces together. You know, we look at the market and say, what does the market need? What can it handle? What can the land handle? What, you know, there will be physical restrictions on the actual property itself. And then, of course, the third piece is operating within your stipulations. And, you know, that's the biggest piece, because you all have the say. And where we are at this phase, we tried to leave everything as kind of general and open as possible, so that we could have these discussions with you, and, you know, develop things as we go with site plan, and, you know, final plans, phasing, caps of units, all that kind of stuff. We kind of left that open at this point, you know, to open the discussions. But we want to obviously do something that works for everyone. So I feel like we're kind of, we're at step one, and we start talking about traffic studies and wastewater and all that. Well, we can't do a wastewater study until we know how many units we can have on there. So if we submit a site plan, and we say, okay, here's 32 units, and we're going to do 16 in phase one, and 16 in phase two, well, then we can go and do a wastewater assessment at that point. Well, what's the impact of these 16 units? And that's kind of where we get to those.
Well, all due respect, you came to us saying 65 units, you didn't say 32 units.
Right. And the reason that the 65 number came up is, you know, after discussing with Kevin how to present it originally, is, you know, that's the cap for the medium-density residential. And again, we were trying to just leave it open, and then get to the table and narrow everything down from that point.
So wouldn't you do a wastewater study on the max then, as opposed to the minimum, something less?
Well, no, not necessarily, because if...
Why not?
Because we also have, like, restrictions on the land, like I said, so, you know, the first thing we do before we spend a lot of money on going farther, you know, with attorneys and engineers, is, do we actually have zoning? And then, okay, well, we do have zoning, well, great, well, let's start coming up with a site plan. And then we can say, okay, well, here's something that works, and is, you know, financially feasible as well for what the land will do. There's quite a bit of slope there as well, and we'll have to move quite a bit of dirt around, and, you know, there's a lot of considerations. So we start getting into, what's the actual cost of this, and does it make sense, and then will you guys approve that?
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
On the HUD property, the one to Southwest, I count about 32 units on the, looking at the picture?
Yes, sir.
And it's about twice the area of your land?
Yes, sir.
So would you be willing to approach a number like 25 or 30 instead of 65?
I'm not sure that 25 or 30 would work, to be honest. You know, that's, if we have a cap that we have to work within, then we would have to look at that number, and then see, does this make sense? The density would just naturally be higher on our property the way we're going to design it, because we're looking at, instead of a duplex, it's more of a fourplex. So, you know, initial phase might be something like four, fourplexes, 16 units. The maximum number of 65 for the property is probably not realistic either. That was just the number we started with. It's probably more like a 48 cap, something like that, of even what it's feasible. That doesn't mean, oh, we're going to go build 48 units as soon as we get this. That means that's probably the max of what's possible there.
Well, we agree to that number, though, we're setting you loose to build up to that number with no more, we don't get to limit it anymore, as I understand it. So that's why it's pretty critical for you to pick a number that's closer to the property around it.
Right. Well, when we get to the site plan stage, you know, then any additional stipulations can be, you know, put in at that point, as far as landscaping, unit count, the way they're facing, the way they look, roof lines, all of that.
Any, anything else, sir?
No.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Can we ask, can we?
Sure.
Okay, so on this report that Steve's prepared, special conditions to the granting of zoning changes, where it says, as a condition to the granting of any zoning change, the planning commission will require the submission of a conceptual development plan. So can a zoning change be approved pending that submission? Or should a zoning change be tabled awaiting that condition?
The commission is certainly at liberty to table this for such information as you request of the applicant. I think the applicant's contention is that they have submitted a development plan that consists of the plat and these conditions. If you feel like you need more information, it's, you are at liberty to request more information.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think there's good points on both sides here. But I think to, if we wanted something that was catalytic, I think a proposal that was more detailed would encourage all of us to vote, you know, to vote positively, and to vote at all. I mean, because I just think that it's hard, it's hard for me to look at it and say, well, gee, if 65 units are on, that's what's on the board. So, I mean, I think something that's more, I don't know, I'm used to seeing, even for the plat approvals, something you can look at. You know what I mean? You can see how it fits in. That's the compatibility aspect of any project, is, you know, like, Denio, let's say, for instance, they presented something to us, and I'm, I've only been on it a year and a half, but I could look at that, and I could get a sense of what I thought about it. But this is all like, I've been put together in my head, and I have no idea except what that picture is. You know, it doesn't present to me as a, as a person that's just a citizen, it doesn't present anything that's really concrete. We're voting on something that has no concrete viewpoint for us to, you know, and it's the same thing with any projects that we've had, even Tanville College and other people, that the presentation has been different.
I understand.
So that's the only reason I have the biggest issue with it. I might have other ones, but before I could make a vote myself, without abstaining or something, would be to have a bigger picture, that would be catalytic in putting this in motion.
So what you're asking for is a plat, basically, with a layout?
Yeah, something that, that we could look at, what would be in there? I don't see what would be in there right now. You know, in my head, I don't, you know what I mean?
Something more in the nature of, not a site plan, but more of a, but it's closer along those lines, is that what you're saying?
Like, are you wanting to build 16 apartments in one long row of a continuous building? Are you wanting to line them up? Are you wanting to put them in some shape, you know, like a square with a courtyard in the middle?
There were many options, I've thrown them out now. You can take, those computer programs can, you can throw out any number of things, but if what I'm hearing...
So they don't know what they want to do?
Let me show you the challenge we have here. I appreciate the condition on the traffic study, because if we start outside moving in, that could dictate where that entrance goes. So they turned in one conceptual plan that you guys are typically used to seeing, and again, to be fair to the applicant, I'm not a big believer in site plans at the zone change level, and I'll tell you why. And I'm telling applicants this, if a Walgreens came in tomorrow and said, hey, we're going to zone this property to put a Walgreens, yeah, it might help to see everything down to the handicap parking spaces, but the same, you have this vision, oh, well, that's a Walgreens. I think at the zone change level, it needs to be conceptual, and it needs to be able to move a tad bit. That's what the site plan's for, is to get down to the hard engineering. To ask a applicant to come forward with all the engineering, all the development, lock it down at the zone change to the parking space, is what, somewhat of a disservice, not only to the applicant, to the community, because we have other folks that need to review things, and get down to that drainage, stormwater, parking, access, water, sewer issues. And so what you all need to do is somehow figure out, is the use going to work, what are the general parameters? I think what we need is a conceptual plan, maybe a preliminary site plan, with not too much hard engineering, because we may have to tweak all that as we get to the site plan, and we have a committee that that's their job. But the reason I didn't like the first submittal, because we had a hard site plan for 80-some units. The parking really didn't meet several issues, the access needed to be seriously looked at, and then this traffic study issue's really driving the whole train to some level. And until we get that answer, this project could go, and so the whole layout was contingent on the access, the width of the access, the depth of that access, and we're really not going to know that till a traffic study really is done.
Yeah, that's the reason I'm asking for this now, is because you saying that you didn't like that plan. So we haven't seen any. So to me, I mean, I'm saying that I trust your judgment, but at the same time.
Excuse me, let's continue with the testimonies, okay?
Correct.
So, and again, and secondly, a two-dimensional site plan doesn't get to the heart of this two-story issue that's been raised by some of the neighbors. So again, conceptually, I think putting some conditions, what we're always going to need is something in writing, and some kind of conceptual drawing, that we can kind of have some wiggle room. And if that's what you guys are, I think what you heard is tabling the application maybe to get a resubmission, it maybe is where I hear our commissioner possibly wanting to go.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this zone change? Hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition to this zone change? Please go to the mic, introduce yourself, name and address.
Once again, my name's Rick Cole, I live on Reba Ridge and Bluegrass Estates. They showed up here today with no plan. Their original plan was 80 units on that little tract of land. Today, you guys get to decide what's really going to be on that, and I'm asking you to just put some stipulations, because you have that authority. If you approve this zoning change, I ask that you make it comparable with the neighborhood. If you look at the bigger tract of land, that's twice as big, there's 32 units. What if on that little small tract of land, that you limit to 16 units? That makes it comparable with the rest of that neighborhood. I also ask that you make them one story, which is what everything that's out there is. I also ask that you make them duplexes, because that's what it is. I ask that you would put a stipulation that says that, a maximum of 16 units, brick duplexes, because... brick duplexes, because everything out there is brick. I also asked that you ask for a traffic study, a stormwater study and, and a wastewater study. And I'd also like, if this is approved, I would like for you to require them, within thirty days, to show up with a site plan that meets the guidelines we just talked about. That's if you approve it. What I'd actually like you to do is either table this until they show up with some kind of plan that shows exactly what they want to do, or e- even deny it. They can always come before you again and refile this. But I would prefer that you deny this, or at least table it, or if you do approve it, please make stipulations that it conforms to the things we just talked about. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Ma'am, did you wanna, you had a question or something while ago? Okay. No, not you, lady behind. Anyone else? Hearing is closed.
Hey, guys, I have a question for Steve. And how appropriate is it if, you know, if we were to table this? Uh, let's say, yeah, how appropriate is this? If we were to table this and ask that they come forward with a preliminary site plan, but also that that preliminary site plan be accompanied with a traffic, you know, sewer and wastewater study?
I'll have to let the applicant address that. I, I don't think that's out of line to table anything, if that's what y'all choose. I don't think it's out of line to request applicant to bring a traffic study with the zone change. I think that's where we want to be someday. It can't be done in probably a month. It takes time to do traffic studies, if not a few months. Um, and then the traffic study could be reviewed and those recommendations, traffic study could be incorporated as conditions. That's where we want to be someday as a commission. The wastewater and that, that's out of my jurisdiction, not sure how the city moves forward with those type of studies or if studies are done, or if it's requests and communication with the utility service, one-on-one. That always happens at the site plan level. And that's a, a part of the site plan approval level.
Other questions? If not, we need a motion.
Well, I guess I would, I'll propose a motion, is, uh.
Just go ahead and make it, Gary.
Is that we would table the request for a zone change and ask that the developer come back with a, you know, a preliminary site plan, along with a traffic study that would support the site plan.
Motion's been made? Second. Ten seconds.
If I might ask a question of Mr. Nesbit?
Yes, sir.
How long do you think it'll take to provide that information that's been requested? Is that something they'll have by the next meeting?
I don't see it. I, to be honest, I, I was thinking about that. I, I think if we were to do that, it would be, um, probably sixty days. And, um, at that point, if the traffic study was not completed, we would just come in and ask that, uh, you pass it out for another thirty. But realistically, I, I don't, um, want to set you all up to come here and, and not have anything for you.
Would you agree at this point to waive the ninety-day action requirements and the zoning ordinance on this application?
We would.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anything else, Henry? We're good. Motion's been made in second, all in favor? Two, three, four, all opposed. One, two. Motion carries four to two. Thank you. Item four, Danville Planning and Zoning, Boy County Planning, Danville Boy County Planning Zone Commission filed an application to amend Articles one, two, three and six of the joint ordinance, joint zoning ordinance. Uh, we will discuss that, but the city has asked us to table that due to the fact that they have not had time to review it, if I understand it correctly, and, but we can have a discussion on it.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the other commissioners might want to take a break or what you think might be appropriate, or if you guys are good to go. I'm ready to roll through it, whatever y'all need. Let's go, all right. That's what I like to hear. All righty, so zoning ordinance. The advisor, I'm gonna start with, advisory committee met on this, spent several, or, I don't know, two, three hours or so, somewhere in there, um, on this zoning ordinance amendment. This, this is a big deal and we, the staff has spent quite a bit of time on this, working on this. We're proposing this in two phases. The first phase is, and there's a lot of paper in your packet. Um, the first phase is the procedural stuff, the reorganization and the housekeeping element of this. So this is just proposing drafts Articles one, two, three and six. And as you heard the chairman say, I'd like to walk you through this in the public hearing. This is a public hearing on amendment to the zoning ordinance, a fairly substantial one. And we would table then any action until a future meeting to give the city an opportunity or even the public to, to have more comment. So I think it's a positive thing to do this on the record if there's other stuff. So I'm gonna start with why amend the zoning ordinance, and obviously I just said to reorganize, um, better readability. And so I'm gonna show you something real quick. This, this is what's on our website up there. That's Article Three, a scanned document from two thousand and four. You can see the holes on the side where someone pulled it out of their book, we've scanned it. We've retyped this entire book, because we didn't have a digital copy of this, because a consultant did this. And where we're heading is better readability. So there's the proposed Article Three in general up there. Better fonts, better spacing, more charts, better organization, um, and that's what we're trying to do. We're also trying to modernize terms, processes, uses, standards, on and on and on. We're trying to delete the stuff we don't need and we're trying to get one book. I want to point something out. What's on our website currently, if you go to our website, there's all the eighteen articles. Those are Danville's articles. In theory, there's four, well, three zoning ordinances, we don't count junction. But there's different books. You have to pull a county book, pull a city book, pull a Pariville book, yet they're really all the same language. If you guys remember, when we brought amendments to the planning commission to pass, we put them in everyone's book. So it really is the same book, but there's four books. Well, if that's the case, you'd have four pages on the website that look like that. One for Danville, one for Pariville. And, and that's not where we want to be. We want to have one book that everyone adopts and will make the differences in the book where it says Danville only or Pariville only. And then the website will look cleaner. If someone will need something on the website, they can get it by whatever article. But there's your eighteen articles, several of which are just reserved articles, have no verbiage in them. Uh, the other thing that you guys need to be aware of, we're proposing this in two phases. Is the easy stuff first. The second phase is a big deal. There has been a Supreme Court case, and I think it was reflected in the paper. We have to revise the sign ordinance by a Supreme Court directive. And so the second phase is gonna be chapters four and five and seven. And that's where all the parking and signage and landscaping and district names, all that stuff's coming later. This first phase, again, is Articles one, two, three and six, and it consolidates twelve articles into four. So we'd actually be deleting one, two, three, four, six, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen and merge those. That's the cross-out text you have in the back. This was very complicated for us, because we wanted to give you the new stuff and underline and we have to cross the old stuff, is what the city wants. So you've got the new articles in front of you and I'll reference them by one, two, three. And then you've got page numbers now at the bottom that say two-point this or one-point whatever. And I'll walk you through some stuff really fast. Um, and I think Nancy's in the back, back here, she's looked at the document and has a few comments. Uh, some other folks have. So there's not much in Article One I want to point out at all. It's housekeeping, it's general. But there's some verbiage in there about private deeds and covenants and landlocked properties, review bodies, who's who, who's on what boards. All of that stuff is kind of new and we didn't have in our existing ordinance. If anything, I want to jump to Article Two, definitions, and explain what I'm doing here. Lots of new definitions that we need, but really don't go into effect with this first phase, because until we get to Article Four and Five, for example, we've got one to address this Airbnb issue. We got a definition in Two, Two is our definition chapter, but it won't be really valid until we get to Four and figure out where Airbnbs go or don't go. But all the definitions have been done that we either need under state law or that are required or that we're gonna need for process. So the first one I want to point out is on two dash two. Our definition of agricultural use, you just heard us talking about ag. State law is pretty specific on what agriculture means, on page two dash two. I don't think you realize what number C and D say under that, but our agricultural definition has been amended by the state and it's now four general paragraphs. So C and D are kind of amazing that you can do that on a farm, but that's what the state says a farm is now. So you've got A, which is what a traditional farm is, growing crops, living there, cows, horses. You know, it's got all these terms. B's about farm wineries and C's about events related to horses, big events. Seventy people, more than seventy people, trucks, trailers, spectators, buildings, lights. State law says you can't, that's ag. That's ag is living there and living there as a farm and having your own horses. You can do these things by right. So we're gonna make sure our definition meets that. Right below that ag definition on three dash three, agritourism, huge, huge definition that went in a couple legislatures ago. Agritourism, and I'll explain to you where it comes in. We now define what agritourism is. You'd be shocked if you got on the state's agritourism website and saw what they have approved as agritourism activities. We're gonna put the definition in, but we don't know where it's gonna go just yet. Because I'll, I'll mention, it says qualifying activities may include farming, but it says not limited to weddings, events, harvest drone operations, farmers' markets, natural re- based activities. I've seen ATV riding tracks, laser zombie shoot. You go to the state, uh, big places, pumpkin patches, something like Marksberry Farm up the road, that might qualify as an agritourism. So if the state rolls it into their layer, we gotta be careful. Do those belong out in the county by right? Or do we need to figure where and when those go? But that's our new definition of agritourism. And if you turn the page, I'm gonna show you why it matters on bed and breakfasts. The state, a couple sessions ago, um, and I hate to say it, but the representative that sponsored this change was a Representative Jody Richards, used to be former Speaker of the House. Hmm, wonder what county he was from. Seem to know that guy. This change came because of a problem, I think, happened in a place I used to know. So we used to have bed and breakfasts, now we got four kinds of bed and breakfasts in the state law. We have a bed and breakfast establishment, we have a home, we have an inn and we have a farm stay. And it's interesting on that bed and breakfast farm stay, says a bed and breakfast farm stay whose focus is agritourism. So what we had happening in the state was someone had opened a bed and breakfast and say, I'm gonna open a gun club out back or an ATV riding track. That's agritourism and that's a bed and breakfast and I'm allowed to be out in the county. So that's the challenge we've got today, is the state has said there's kind, different kinds of bed and breakfasts and we're gonna figure where and when, and that comes in Article Five. When are we gonna allow bed and breakfast by right and when is one gonna need a conditional use permit, because it's way too intense? I would say a bu- bed and breakfast farm stay is, can be very intense, possibly. So that's kind of how those things relate. Not too many other definitions I want to point out, except till we get to two dash eight. Our definition of family, the advisory committees, again, spent quite a bit, bit of time on this. We had a definition of family that looks like every other zoning ordinance in the state. The difference is, do you allow two unrelated, three unrelated or four unrelated? They all say the same leadoff sentence, any number related by blood, marriage, adoption, guardianship, on and on. So if you're all related, you could have twenty people live in a house. But at what point do unrelated people take it from a single-family dwelling to a multi-family dwelling? That's, comes to the core of having the definition of what a family is. The advisory committee, uh, and, and myself have looked at this and our number was four and we've taken, taken that back down a notch to three. A lot of communities in the state have it at two or three. Very few have it at four. To start to think about four unrelated people, what do you care if they live in a house? Unless it's four college guys, then it feels like a fraternity next door. But what, but when it's four unrelated and their children or their families, how, how is that not a multi-family situation? So the core of this is, when is a single family, a single-family dwelling, three-bedroom house with a family and unrelateds? And when does it become multi-family? So that family definition's going from three on the unrelated to, uh, from four to three. Uh, flipping the page, group living, big problem we've got in our old ordinance. Page two dash ten, you see our definition now of group living. Our current ordinance says, what's a rehab facility, what's a halfway house, when you're incarcerated, when you're not incarcerated? What's a rehab center, what's a drug and rehab? What the state law and court cases have pushed us to is everything's a group home. You quit trying to figure out when it's drug and alcohol rehab and when it's juvenile detention and when you're incarcerated, when you have a band on your wrist or ankle or when you don't. It's group, it's a group living and it's a group home. And then we figure out where and when those go. So that, that's cleaning up, that's a cleanup, a perfect example where our old ordinance is a problem. Because right now, what you read in our old ordinance for a halfway house, ours says you have to be arrested, be in a halfway house. But yet we know there's halfway houses out there that you can check yourself into and not be under any kind of home arrest. But our definitions are very narrowly structured from a day gone by for group living, halfway homes, drug and alcohol rehab, mental, uh, uh, you know, disability homes. Now we just call them all group living. That's the simple solution. Page two dash eleven, I know Lisa back there will love, because now we're gonna define what a kennel is. Y'all, we've had some problems here and we've been thrust in the middle of a lot of stuff from the enforcement end. Our old ordinance says if you have more than three dogs, you're a kennel. Doesn't matter whether you're really a kennel or running a business. If you just have that fourth dog, you've now bumped heads with Lisa down there, planning and zoning, and she's gotta come tell you which dog's gonna have to move, move off the property. I don't think that's our role, you guys. I think our role is to determine when someone's running a business at their house and when they're zoned right to run a business. So what this does is now that, is spell out when we're having a commercial kennel and when we have basically a regular person keeping pets on their property. And again, we'll figure out where and when, when we get to Article Five. We need that fixed. Nothing else in two that I think jumps out at me, um, short-term rentals on two seventeen. That's the industry term for an Airbnb or what we call a VRBO or whatever the term is. These are popping up all over. I've heard our tourism director say, there's now thirty-some, maybe thirty in our county. Technically, by the zoning ordinance today, they're not legal. A single-family dwelling says a single-family dwelling. If you're renting your house weekly or daily or monthly as an Airbnb, there's no landing spot in the zoning ordinance says you can do that, other than your overnight accommodation and therefore you shall be zone commercial. What this says now is we have a definition of what short-term rental is and we haven't figured out where it's going, but where we're leaning towards, bringing to you, is there's gonna be times it's appropriate to have a short-term rental by right and there's other times you're gonna need a CUP or a zone change. It's gonna come down to the scale, the ownership and how it's being rented. But today, we have Airbnbs popping up all over. They're basically rentals. Someone's renting the house like a motel, daily, weekly, whatever, in a single-family zone. How does that even work when the zoning ordinance says a single family is all we can do there, meaning what a family is, how you live there, how you interact? We gotta address Airbnbs. So short-term rental is the industry term and now it's in our book if we pass this, but it doesn't go into effect until we figure out how to, where and when it again. Nothing else, I'm gonna jump into and through, and two, that's it, jump to Article Three. Article Three is one hundred percent cleanup, you guys. It's when we do variances, when we do zone changes, when we do administrative appeals, zoning map amendments, traffic studies, all the stuff we just talked about, that's spread out all over our prior zoning ordinance. You know, the zoning ordinance before, you have to go to Article eighteen to look at the zone change, thirteen to look at signs, eight to look at parking. What we want to do is put everything in one place, process-wise, and then Article Four is gonna be everything you do, so I can hand to the developer three pages and say, if you're zoning NCC, here's parking, here's landscaping, here's signage, here's use, here's setbacks. Right now, you gotta go grab multiple articles. And if you're a developer or someone wanting to look at property, you, you almost need to pull the whole ordinance down and pick pages from every section to know what I can do with my property. This is kind of the streamlining part of this, uh, that we're getting at. Page three dash five is kind of a big deal and I want to point that out on zoning permits. The advisory committee looked at this, we talked about this at length. This is where we start to build the process of building and zoning being consolidated or streamlined. We talk about everything requires a building permit, pretty straightforward. Zoning permits are changing, right there in front of you. It says, the current draft says, and again, this is get, again, where the city's reviewing some stuff. This starts to change when and where we do zoning permits, not all the time, every time. Um, in fact, in the county, we were just doing them on non-residential stuff. Someone's gonna build a bigger project, a church, something, you know, whatever you can do out there, maybe one of these agritourism things. But something big that's going out in the county, we need to look at it. But if you're building a house out on five acres or one acre or two acre, I don't think it's necessary to have to come to the planning commission and pay a fee for us to tell you you need two parking spaces and to be eight foot off the property line. Or fifty foot back or seventy-five foot back, depending what ag district you're in. I, I think that's just how the building permit needs to evolve, that you should be able to go get a building permit and us communicate to somebody what the rules are and it all gets rolled through a building permit, one permit, one fee. Um, at the bottom of page three dash five, this is a big, big paragraph down there. We miss parking lots right now. If you were to tear a building down downtown and black top it corner to corner, we don't even see it. It's not required to get a zoning permit. It's not required to get a zoning permit. There's no such thing as grading or paving permits. You just tear down the parking lot and pave it and guess what always happens? Then someone calls and says, it's not landscaped, it's not striped right. This catches the parking lots that don't come with buildings or on standalone parcels. So this gives us an opportunity to say if you're building the parking lot or you're paving, um, you're going to have to come in and get a zoning permit and we're going to look at it. Uh, on commercial stuff, again, we're not worried about residential stuff. And then on three dash six, the CO, building COs and the building permit, this ties it all together. So one of the most important paragraphs in this Article Three is down there, number D, at the bottom under three dash four, certificate of occupancy. This is what the building inspector gives you once you get a building permit. D's saying, we'll go out and do a job. You go get a building permit, planning, zoning goes out and does a job and the CO is the last kind of approval point. That's the stick, if you will, that will get things done right. What's happening now is you get a building permit and we heard mentioned, uh, Mr. Metcalf's apartments over there, he built a project, multiple buildings. This is an example how these things can get away from us a tad bit. He got a building permit for building one and the building inspector's looking at the four walls. And once it was built to the code, the building inspector gives a CO and says now you can move in. But at that point, the parking lots weren't built, the landscaping wasn't in, and the drainage wasn't done. That's under the zoning permit. So how are we going to get compliance and get a builder to get the parking lot in if you can get your CO and get your client in the building without building the parking? Way this comes together is you give a building permit and say, start your project, but we're not going to let you into all the rules are in compliance, including the zoning ordinance. And then we go out and look at it and the CO is the last thing to drop. And when the parking's in, then move the clients in the apartment. I, I think that's how naturally you'd think this would evolve. But it's turned into two processes with two reviews and two kind of inspections and that's what we're trying to clean up with those two pages right there. Again, that's kind of a big deal and a new change. Nothing else in three that jumps out at me, except I do want to point under variances and conditional uses, I won't go to those pages, but I don't know if you guys know, but you guys are under the statute allowed to grant variances and CUPs. The Board of Adjustments does that most of the time, but if you're hearing a variance concurrently with a zone change, you guys have the authority to grant variances or zone change or conditional use permits. Very rarely will that happen, but time and money are factors. If an applicant's coming forward with a zone change and they need a height requirement set, a variance, why can't we do that at the same meeting? Be different votes, but it saves the client multiple steps, different boards of all that. So we've put that option in there that you guys get to assume the duties of the Board of Adjustments when it's needed and if you choose to. Won't happen very often. Traffic studies are on three dash fifteen. This puts it into zoning ordinance law. And, and the advisory committee gave me some pretty clear direction here on traffic studies, when and where we're going to trigger a traffic study. They asked, can they be waived? So we've made a paragraph on how we could waive traffic studies when necessary. And I think what the idea was is to say you need a traffic study every time is not fair to developers either and won't always be needed. There's op, there's situations, for example, on the bypass, if we already got good access, to say you meet the threshold of a traffic study, so thou shall do one, when clearly KDOT doesn't want it or we don't need it. This, we put a paragraph in here that says we can waive that when either the city of Danville or KDOT or the county says we don't need it or don't want it, then we can waive it. But this puts it into the zoning ordinance for the first time and traffic studies are required if you hit that five hundred average daily trips, which is a decent bar, which you guys heard about today. Other than that, in three, um, the next big items on three nineteen, site plans, you guys just heard about site plans. The Danville Bull County approach today is site plans all the time, every time, every time, we do site plans. Most communities don't do that, so what we've done is put thresholds when we do site plans. Give you a good example, a small little Fazoli's Restaurant, I mean, if it's a six thousand square foot building and we sell them, you need eighteen parking spaces and your sign's only thirty foot high and a hundred square foot, I think they can figure out how to get a building permit and live within that realm. So we're talking about smaller commercial developments going straight to the permit. No site plans. Smaller multi-family developments, straight to the permit, no site plans. Smaller industrial and commercial, uh, but the big stuff, it's got to go through the whole engineering exercise every time. And so what you see are new thresholds, anything over ten thousand square foot, site plan. Multi-family, anything greater than sixteen units, site plan. If you're going to go out and, you know, Vince, if you're going to go out and build a fourplex in the NCC district and I tell you the setbacks and the parking requirement, do I really need you to do a full set of engineer drawings and bring them through site plan approval, spend all that time to build a fourplex to get it right on the property? I, I guess I trust more developers and builders and I think they'll do that wrong. And I think our old ordinance was set up, we do them every time, I, for whatever reason, I guess just the trust factor, we got to look at every single project. And again, you guys remember when we bumped out the marathon on Houstonville Road for a walk-in cooler, they had to come get a new site plan. That, that's where we don't want to be as a, as a development community or as a planning commission. We need to look at the stuff that matters, big parking, big landscaping, drainage problems, access, but a walk-in cooler on a, on a three thousand square foot building? Go see the building inspector and get your zoning permit. By the way, we'll still be looking at it at that level and we'll figure out if you're doing it right or wrong. That's where we're kind of going with site plan approvals. And then, of course, the next page, A through T, by the way, what goes in a site plan, i- it's, it's, it's definitely the, everything we can look at will be in a site plan. Other than that, we allow minor amendments to site plans on the next page, three twenty-two. Really small things can actually be done in-house now by the staff under what's called the five percent rule. So if someone's tweaking their parking, use Buffalo Wings and Rings, you know, they gave us a site plan, showed us their seventy parking spaces. If all of a sudden they said, you know, we need to lose that one, we're going to move the landscaping five foot this way, that's something we can do in-house without bringing them back through the whole process back to this board, newspaper ad, on and on. So that wraps up Article Three for me. And then Article Six is non-conforming. We just cleaned up the language in Article Six. When we do non-conforming structures, non-conforming uses, and non-conforming lots. When's a voluntary demonstration or demolition, when it's involuntary, when your rights kick in or you lose them as non-conforming. We've added some verbiage about signage in here because non-conforming signs kind of slip through the cracks. We treat them a little differently. It's all spelled out now when non-conforming comes in or doesn't come in. That's everything. And this I went through fast, you got all the strike-through text, sixty or seventy pages behind that. This is phase one. And again, as you heard our chairman, the city is reviewing this for some technical aspects. Uh, they'd like a little more time, so what they've asked is that you guys table any action and we count this as a public hearing, but we table this to the next meeting, uh, keep the hearing open so we don't have to re-advertise it.
So if any questions we have, we would, should wait until the next-
Do them now, do them then. Uh, this, some folks in the audience may have questions, we can do it however you want. I can tell you, we, we've got a full agenda next month. We've already had a cell tower application filed, those IJW cases are coming back. Obviously, we might not hear this zone change because of the traffic study, but we've, we haven't hit our filing deadline yet. And I think there's two more zone changes in the works right now that I heard's coming our way. So, and, um, so yeah, we'll do it next month. We could go straight to the vote or we could reopen the hearing and kind of take more public comments and go from there. I may have to actually tweak some revisions if the city gives me text changes on top of that.
I have a couple of questions-
Yes, sir.
-that we do an hour, wait a week, or wait till the next-
It's, it's however you all prefer.
We've already addressed a couple of them, we'll be quick to check.
Give me the page number that helped me too, so-
Well, I, yeah, uh, yeah, you, again, you've addressed several of my questions already. On section, oh, Article Two, I guess, the one question I had was on, oh, page seventeen under setbacks.
Two, two seventeen?
Yeah, two seventeen under setback.
Okay.
Uh, I guess in the past I've always thought that in terms of measuring a setback, it's made, measured perpendicular to the building at its, at the building line, not at the eve. Is this new?
No, it's, it's been at the eve, but the definition of a setback's pretty straightforward in the state law and other things.
So it is the eve?
Should be the eve, the structure bumps out, you know, if you build a weird bonus room or it would be the, the outer edge of the building, whether it's up high, low, but, um, we measured at the eve now, our zoning ordinance is a little vague like that. You have to go to Article Five to really figure out-
Yeah.
-some of that. And the definition of setback doesn't say it in two, but five says it, it's the eve.
Because in the past, when I've dealt with plenty of zoning as a member of Habitat for Humanity, it was always to the proper, to the building foundation, not to the eve.
It's to that screw in the gutter that bumps out. It's, it's, and we just did this at the BOA.
The only other question I had was on section three dash fifteen.
Three dash fifteen, okay.
Where, um, where you talk about zoning, what, what needs to be shown? I guess it's three fourteen on the very bottom.
Zoning plat, boundary survey.
Do we need a purpose statement in there somewhere or is that not?
Uh, you know, at the zone change, we can add a purpose statement if you want it.
The only question is, do we have it now or what?
No. Not on zone change plat. The zone change plat, the word plat is used interchangeably, really it's, it's the-
Well, if we don't have it now, I'm not looking to add it.
Well, and let me explain what, what you got in there and it's a good point. The, uh, the zone change is a meets and bounds description, so we got to have a survey so we know actually what we're zoning down to the tenth of an acre, where we put a legal footprint on the ground. So that is what technically is a zoning plat. You've heard about concept plans and general development plans and that's under here, general development plan. That's the stuff you want to see, what is it? But at some point, we got to have an exhibit and you got that with that zone change, which looked just like a survey. The purpose statement of that was to zone four point one zero nine acres to NCC. We can put that on there, but that is actually, we're requiring a survey with every zone change so we know physically what we're zoning. The, the general development plan language is back into the chapter, is where that has to come in with every zone change and it says it in here and that's where you're going to get all the stuff and you're going to figure out what's what. And the zone change now, that's just a basic piece of paper.
Well, this is my question.
Any questions from the public?
Yes, ma'am.
You knew I had one to be here.
That's okay.
Come to Mike.
Come to Mike, Nancy, please.
I'm glad that Terry brought up about setbacks because I hadn't caught that. Always before we have used at the ground level.
Introduce yourself, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy with Estes Engineering and Surveying. Uh, I have read over ninety percent of it. Uh, I had three questions. Steve answered two of them yesterday, but I do have a question on, uh, page one point two. Uh, and it has to do with landlocked policy. When I talked to Steve yesterday, he was referring to landlocked property that had never been surveyed before. An existing landlocked property. I think that verbiage needs to be in there, that it's an existing landlocked piece of property. And that, um, because we have landlocked property now that we have surveyed, but, but it's only to be sold to an adjoining property owner. This section, it's one, it's section one point ten. It does not specifically say existing non-surveyed property. And I think that needs to be there to-
So where, where do you want it to say that?
Anyplace you want it. Uh, possibly D, but I think that needs to be part of this, you can put H or-
You're right, Nancy. I didn't understand what you just said.
Oh, oh, okay. He said, put it in, in the purp, the purpose of the policy.
What exactly would it say?
Existing?
Existing non-surveyed property.
Right before the word property, we put something right there, say it's current property. And it also then leads into that sentence that says there's no front, which I guess is important to note, that's what we're trying to do.
Because we, we have done landlocked property now, it's been surveyed, but it's to be sold to an adjoining property owner. That does not, the way I understood Steve, that's not property, that's not the landlocked property that we're talking about.
So you know what she-
Oh, yeah, I just said, no.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Not done though, we heard her say that.
We haven't done the rest of it yet.
Any other comments? Questions from the public? Hearing none, a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Could I jump in with one question real quick?
Yes.
Sorry about that, just get it out of the way. Uh, page three twenty, item S, and this seems relevant in terms of our discussion. It's about traffic impact and study.
Yep.
Parenthesis, if required. And I was wondering-
What, with three twenty?
Three twenty, three hyphen twenty, bottom of page S.
Yeah, okay.
Um, i- is that referring to specific places in the zoning ordinance where it will be enumerated that traffic studies are required or when it's required the commission's discretion?
This is what goes in a site plan.
Right.
So we're saying the zone change triggers a traffic study when needed, but a site plan could get one if we need one also.
Okay, so it's if the commission decides it's not going to say specifically elsewhere in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it says a traffic study if required. So again, we're going to try to get them at the zone change, but let's say a property's zoned right and it goes straight to site plan and we feel it meets the five hundred average daily trips, we could ask for a traffic study.
Okay.
As an additional item in the site plan. That's why it's in that. It needs to be, have some wordsmithing on it, just tell me what that on.
I think it's, I think it's fine, this question area. So I, I'm good, thank you.
We're okay, Hendrick?
We're, we're okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to table.
Motion make to table till the next meeting?
Second.
Jeff, second, question, discussion, all in favor?
Coaching unanimous. Advisory Committee report. You should have a copy though.
Now, you guys-
Advisory Committee, you don't have.
You guys met, again, there's, there's not a report because it was sort of in, put in that, the advisory committee la, met, again, three hours, went through every page of this amendment. Uh, and it's part of the draft you have.
Personnel Committee report, you do have a copy of that. Personnel Committee met and Steve, you want to share?
No, I don't, I don't think Personnel met.
We didn't, why did we come up with this then?
That's from last month.
Why, we got it here today then?
I don't know what's in your packet. Oh, I, I know why you have it, you're, you have the minutes. Lisa attached all the stuff from last month to your minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's not in our packet.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what you got, is the draft minutes had all the attachments from last month to it. I think that's what's laying in front of you, the minutes.
So we have already approved it?
That was last month.
Okay, good.
You have it because you had the minutes laying in front of you from last month.
All right, thank you. Confused on that. Budget, that's on, that's the only thing. Budget Committee report.
We did meet, go ahead, Terry.
We did meet and reviewed a budget, a preliminary budget that Steve had put together that we need to turn into the city and county for them to proceed with their budget process. And, uh, did you want to cover any of that with them?
No, no, I think it's ready to bring to you next month.
We, we reviewed it and, oh, I don't know how much detail you want, but we were very